To order, it's a Tuesday, August 28, 2007. We'll have, we'll ask Reverend Green, would you come up and give us the invocation? And we'll have the pledge by Mr. Marshall.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we thank you for the privilege of prayer, for you've given us this means that we may bring all of our cares and concerns to you because we know that you care for us. And so on this day as we come, we thank you for the opportunity for men and women to come together in government, that they bring forth their unified front for what's best for the community. Help us to be forgiven of our sin and to walk in relationships of love and trust, that your purpose may be accomplished and the community may be blessed. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go to D., roll call.
Mr. Marshall.
President.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Lawson.
Very good.
Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hobbs.
Yes. There, Ms. Silver, we'll go to E.
To consider overriding the mayor's veto of ordinance number 231-2007 entering into professional service contracts with John W. Scott and Tony Martin to provide legal advice, counsel, and services to the Alexandria City Council. Mr. President, according to section 2-15 of the charter, I am presenting to you a veto by Mayor Roy on ordinance number 231. The veto was, the ordinance was delivered to his office on August 15th and returned to the clerk's office on August 21st. With the veto message and the ordinance information is in your books.
Move on veto, I say.
It's been moved in a second. All in favor?
Whoa. You have a discussion?
Discussion.
Okay. For one, I'm certainly not going to vote to override the veto. I agree with it. I found that in working with the attorneys we have available to us, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gist, our mayor actually, and his chief assistant, I can find no legal advice that I've been lacking.
Is that right?
And also think that this is against the charter, and I'm not going to vote to override.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fowler. Ms. Silver.
I have two things. First, I'd like to read two memos, two letters, and have them entered into the minutes of the meeting today. The first is to Mr. Charles Johnson from James Downs, the district attorney. Dear Chuck, thank you for your letter of August 21st and the attached resolution. I concur with the observation of Assistant Attorney General Charles Brode that provided credible evidence of new open meeting issued do not appear and provided that the council grants Mr. Brode a brief time at a convenient meeting to do a brief educational presentation on the statute. The adoption of this resolution alleviates the need for formal court action under the open meetings law. By way of information, several years ago during the Randolph administration, I received an open meetings complaint concerning the board of zoning and adjustments, and we were able to satisfactorily resolve the complaint by the adoption of a similar resolution by that body. A copy of that resolution is attached, and he said his personal regards, James Downs. This was an answer to the note from Charles H. Brode, Assistant Attorney General, in which he said to Mr. Johnson, "Thank you for faxing me a copy of the recent resolution passed by the Alexandria City Council. When we initially discussed this matter a couple of weeks ago, you forwarded to me a draft of the resolution for my review. I advised you at that time that I thought if the resolution was presented and passed, that would in all likelihood conclude the Attorney General's investigation of the open meetings complaint. Since it appears from the facts that the resolution was in fact passed, please be advised that our office has now concluded this investigation of this matter, and I look forward to meeting you as well as the city council in the near future. Our office appreciates and accepts the invitation extended by the city council to address and discuss with the council the open meetings laws, along with welcome participation by the district attorney, James Downs, as well as yourself and others. Please contact me in order to arrange a date and time for the brief talk discussed above with the council, thanking you with our office to help conclude this matter." This I would like to spend on the minutes. Then I have one closing remark. I am chronologically the oldest one on the council, but I also the youngest as far as length of time here. And I'm a great, I guess maybe certain either amount of wisdom or stupidity comes with age, and I always feel that it's much better to be conciliatory rather than be provocative and argumentative. And the thought occurred to me, and I have not discussed it with any members of the council, nor have I discussed it with any members of the administration, but is it possible, since we did resolve this with the Attorney General, that if we in turn could present this and ask him that he expedite the interpretation of the charter and what its provisions are, and come back as quickly as possible? If it's favorable, fine. If it's not favorable, it still reserves the right to go further. But I feel that time has a way of healing things, and I also feel that patience is something that will keep things going because no matter what the outcome is, someone wins, someone loses, and I'd rather see everybody come out ahead because what we're both involved in is seeing what we can do for the best interests of the entire citizenry of Alexandria. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, for the vote.
Mr. President, I have two requests of people that would like to comment on this item.
I would like to thank the council for allowing me to comment on this ordinance 231, and also state that the opinions I'm expressing aren't solely my opinions, that it's the consensus opinion of a group of about 35 or 40 individuals that have been meeting for approximately the last six weeks. Ordinance 231 called our attention, not because it deals with hiring lawyers, because in our opinion, it's a serious and fundamental threat to our basic document of city government, and that's the Homer Charter. And as you all know, whether you abide by the Charter or not, it's not optional. Abiding by the Charter isn't subject to the normal political give and take and compromise. Each and every member of the council is legally and ethically obligated to abide by the terms of the city charter. In our opinion, ordinance 231 is illegal. Voting to override the veto, in our opinion, would be allowing the consummation of an illegal act and would be a violation of the city charter. And we didn't reach this conclusion lightly. Our group studied it for quite a good period of time. Actually, we had three of the councilmen come visit us, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Lawson, and Mr. Fowler. They came and visited with the group, and we asked questions about it, and we appreciate y'all coming, and thank you. The mayor came by and visited with the group, and we asked him some hard questions, and we appreciate it, and thank you for coming by and visiting with us. After that, I'm a lawyer, I looked at the issue. Other people in the group have their attorneys, they looked at the issue, and the bottom line is, we feel that it's illegal, and it's not really even a close call on the illegality of this ordinance. So we do ask that y'all kill this ordinance today by not overriding the veto. And one other final matter I would like to address is, we feel as a group that this ordinance will do harm and damage to the city. Unfortunately, our city now is suffering from some bad political reputation throughout the state, and it hurts us in creating jobs and getting people to come here and opportunity. And I know we hear a lot about creating jobs and economic growth and opportunity. This ordinance does just the opposite. It gives a bad perception of the city throughout the state. So again, I would ask that y'all kill this ordinance today, and let's get on with the business of creating jobs and economic opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Upton. Next, we have Reverend Nathan Block.
To the mayor, and thank you council for this opportunity, to speak to this council. Actually, I would like to make a plea to this council, and I'm just going to get it right to it. I was in Houston, have a home here and a home in Houston. Getting ready to spend more time here in Alexandria, and my wife and I, we're opening two businesses, a tea room and an antique reproduction furniture gallery. And we were in Houston, and we were running around, and I was a little tired, and so we came in, and I sit down. When I sit down, I'm not going to say that I had a vision or anything, but I had a very strong premonition, and that when I saw coming out of the ground a church and a city. And in the church, the pastor stood up, he raised his head up, and he began to read the word, the Bible, to the people. And in this city, the leader of that city, whether it was governor or mayor, whoever it was, he raised his head up, and he began to read the laws of that city. And under him there was a, the pastor, there was a deacon board that was pulling this pastor down, new pastor, and fighting against him. And under the city, under the governor or the mayor, whoever it was under the city, there was a board, a council, whoever it was, they were pulling him down. And I saw the parallel of a new pastor in a church and a new administrator in a city or government. And neither the followers in the church nor the followers in the city was willing to follow leadership, but they were only reading what was in the book. My plea to this council is to be wise in whatever decision you make, to find some common ground between administration and council, because initially coming here and being here, my wife is from Alexandria and I'm from Houston. This is a great city, and it could be more than you could ever imagine. But I plead with the council to be wise in whatever decision that you make. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, call for a vote.
Say something prior to the vote. I did meet with the group, and I appreciate the invitation, and certainly welcome you to come when there are issues that may not be so appealing to the masses. During the discussion, I think the suggestion was that I ask for Attorney General opinion. I told the group that there were, there was an Attorney General opinion, some may argue that it's not pertinent to this city. I would ask that you look at the language in that charter, and it mimics this charter almost succinctly. In addition to that, I said that even though I feel we have a bona fide Attorney General's opinion, even though I feel we may have had some case law, you can question all of that, I was willing to go another step. I have asked for Attorney General's opinion on this matter. I appreciate what everybody's doing here. I was looking for a sane group to show up when the attorney, various attorneys questioned various members on this council when I was elected, when they said Mr. Marshall wasn't or shouldn't be on the council, for whatever reason, when they said Mr. Smith was violating the charter, when they said I was violating the charter, and certainly couldn't win and should get off Southern University Board, and which I did, which I got a judgment, which said quite to the contrary. What if this council happens to be right if indeed the veto is overturned? Shouldn't the city deserve the right to know what the answer is? Shouldn't the city deserve the right to have casual, to have congenial differences without there being contentious spirits, not only on this body, but certainly within our city that all of us are, with bad luck? I don't see any contentiousness up here, I don't see it over to my right, I don't see it out in the audience. I would ask that you allow the Attorney General or any other someone, and I see a document that's been placed on my desk, if someone wants to take any other action, I don't see anything wrong with it, but I believe that this charter affords clearly the authority in circumstances, in many of the circumstances, the public is not privileged to right now. Many of the circumstances that will warrant this action, the public may not be privileged to at this time. It is our fiduciary responsibility, and I think we will be shirking that responsibility that this general public elected us to uphold if we don't address this question and live out our authority that I feel that is given to the city council via the charter and certainly via state law and opinion that I've seen granted by the Attorney General. And I feel as I close that I've utilized attorneys in the past. I would question an attorney who would tell me I can't have a second opinion. I would hope you would question a physician that would tell you you can't have a second opinion. I would like to believe out of those opinions, that we're going to come out with the best solution for the patient, patient being the city of Alexandria. For us to be contentious in this would be very juvenile, I think we'd be casual, and more importantly, I think we can be about the business of the city of Alexandria, Alexandria moving on from this issue that's caused so many tension. So I just want the public to know that going another step, I've asked for an Attorney General opinion, and me personally, the city council, and I welcome everyone to work with us when it's not something over here that seems like we're in our, and we have different opinions on this, and I'm going to live by whatever the law is. And I'd like to believe that anybody up here is going to live by the law. But again, if I would have listened to the masses, I don't think I would have had an opportunity a year ago to see a young lady I helped make it in the Southern University graduate from that school because she failed to have the money. With that, I call for the questions, there's no other questions. I'm going to call it.
Okay, all in favor?
Right, roll call.
Well, first, let's get a, and I'm, I'm holding, okay. Oppose?
Oppose.
Oh, roll.
Okay, now, roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Hobbs. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Nope.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
No.
You have five yays and two nos, and the ordinance is overridden.
Okay. All right, let's go to L., Concerned Campaigns.
Let's see.
Mr.?
Hey, your public works, please.
Item number 11 needs to be delayed for two weeks.
We're going to go through an introduction, which I'd like to go through introduction, and then in two weeks, you know, they have all the business, we put in committee, a discussion.
Mr. President, if you allow it to, are you talking about 11?
Yeah. All I say is to go to the committee if they allow it to.
If y'all will allow that, we just, since it wasn't in the book, I didn't want to have you looking at something that y'all have really already seen, and in that resolution, you know what's coming. We'd love to go ahead and start the process on it, if you don't mind. Yes, sir.
I move.
Do I introduce it? Okay.
Thank you.
Number 18, your public works.
What commanding number 11?
I'll send it to the legal.
Okay. Okay.
What is, uh?
That's number 12.
If we can, I would like to pull up number 12 and send it to personnel to hear from the candidate for confirmation for the full authority board, that we can delay that for two weeks, and send that to personnel for his confirmation hearing.
You're asking, you're asking for the?
Number 12.
Yeah.
Yeah, the guy to come before the personnel committee to be heard in regards to this confirmation.
Send something, and really send us something down before you can get there.
Right.
A resume?
And with the council, if y'all would be willing, okay, if y'all would be willing, could you tell us what things that you would like to know so we can save, you know, these folks serve?
Just basically, we need, you know, some background information, information about this individual. A lot of times, some people, individuals come before the city and these different boards, we don't know anything about them. And so we want to bring him before the personnel committee at the next council meeting.
I know Mr. Salazar, I don't want to be a reflection, because I'm certainly going to support it.
Me too.
I mean, I don't think I'm going to.
It's Brian Salazar.
Yeah.
It's Brian Salazar.
Call him in my lungs.
Okay, I need a motion.
I say move.
Second. Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Let's go to G., ordinance for final adoption.
Number 16, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for a 155-foot material bucket truck for the electric distribution department.
Move.
Second. Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Number 17, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for Highway 28 West lift station at Vandenberg Drive.
Move.
Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mrs. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
18, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for clamps and couplings for a six-month period.
Move.
Second. Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Number 19, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with Alexandria Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha to make provisions for the city's youth to participate in the 2008 Kappa Basketball League to be held January through March of '08.
Move.
Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect also saying.
Yes, sir.
You got those two.
Yes.
Okay. Oppose, motion carries.
Number 20, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a 15-foot wide utility servitude located in a tract of land owned by George Burns on Sugar House Road.
Move. Second.
Well, by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
21, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the dedication of a Varian with waterline servitude located in Lot 35 of Muriel Park subdivision.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
22, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an act of transfer with JTR of Louisiana for the Versailles Project.
Move.
Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
23, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an act of transfer with Flynn Development Corporation for the Versailles Project.
Move.
By Mr. Silver, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
24, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the existing contract for police uniform accessories for a six-month period.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion.
The mayor didn't usually use six-month period. The mayor particularly usually use six-month rather than annual. Price fluctuation, years' time, how old it is. Different from you calling for six-month.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
25, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Louisiana Department of Agriculture and Forestry to accept the 2007 Urban and Community Forestry Grant.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
26, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Leon Rutterseal during business at Central Louisiana Hot Rod Reunion regarding an event to be held September 1st and a related agreement with Convention and Visitors Bureau and to provide with respect thereto.
Nancy, I think there's a technical amendment.
Yes.
We got amendment. We need to go to amendment. We need to. Trey Barlow.
I believe, yeah.
You need me to get Trey's name?
I believe the amendment is to take out the CVB, is that right?
Remove.
What did you have?
To remove the convention.
Something else, two things, I think.
All I have is the ordinance, it's to remove the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
What are your amendments on point six?
The hot rod amendment, we just need to delete, we don't have an agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Ms. Smith is working independently with the Hot Rod Reunion folks. We didn't know two weeks ago if we would need to have a cooperative endeavor with them. I don't know, Mr.
When is that amendment?
Just move to amend Convention and Visitors Bureau.
It's just to delete the verbiage, I can read the entire, it's very short.
We need to get a motion in a second.
Just to delete and a related agreement with Convention and Visitors Bureau.
First, I need, I need to get a motion and second one.
I move. Second.
Okay, it's moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall.
I move to amend to remove and a related agreement with Convention and Visitors Bureau and to provide with respect thereto, as was Mr. Gist's recommendation in committee.
Right, and Mr. Leon Rutterseal wanted to remind the public that the Central Louisiana Hot Rod Reunion will be hosted downtown at 7:00. I think the crews will come here at 7:00. City police providing security, and the location is the mini park in Amphitheater. It's free to the public, and all proceeds go through a chair of organization.
You're going to move on the amendment, please. I move, y'all move on the amendment.
I did.
I need a second.
Need a second on that.
Seven, seven, okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, original as amended. He's got a big head, isn't he?
Do you need to do this one?
Go ahead, let me do this.
The original as amended?
We voted as amended?
Yes. Oppose, motion carries.
We voted on it.
We finished. Okay.
The answer's right here.
Adopted as amendment.
Okay. All right, number 27, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into multiple cooperative economic development agreements with certain parties for the purpose of accepting transfer of and donations regarding upgrades to the city of Alexandria's existing rail spur at the port and to provide for annisary matters and contracts related thereto, and specifically to contract with the Alexandria Regional Port Authority for temporary management of the rail spur through said project and to authorize the mayor to negotiate these contracts and seek terms favorable to the city that in his discretion are necessary, and further for any policy or ordinance amendments to existing legislation related thereto, and to provide for any related provisions, ordinances, cooperative endeavors, and agreements related thereto.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion.
Did this amendment? I thought that was, didn't Mr. Gist have some amendments for that? There were technical amendments.
Amendment to the rail.
There was an amendment. What is?
Could you get try, Barry, could you get try?
I move with that. I'm moving on the amendment to the.
I read the amendment, though.
I believe the amendment was to enter into the agreement with Hitachi and not with the port.
And to allow the mayor to.
Is that the one you agreed on?
Yeah.
Is that legal?
That's the one in legal.
We already adopted the amendments.
The amendment. Okay. We adopted in a committee.
And what you're voting on would be the ordinance as previously.
Right. As amended in committee.
Correct. Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor. I think we already had the motion, right?
We had a motion in a second, I missed.
Yeah. It was amended in committee, I forgot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Okay, 28, is to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning 2915 Levin Street at the corner of Kent Avenue from SF2 Single Family Moderate Density to MF1 Multi-Family Low Density District as requested by the property owner to permit restoration of a duplex.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Number 29, to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning 3310 7th Street from SF2 Single Family Moderate Density to SF2 MHO Single Family Moderate Density Mobile Home Overlay Zoning District as requested by the property owner to replace a frame house with a manufactured home.
Move.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Number 30, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 28, Section 7.1.8 pertaining to the purpose and intent to allow business uses on non-conforming land and structures and to apply for a special exception to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals after non-conforming actions occur.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Number thirty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Ninth Judicial District Court in providing transportation to the indigent through the Rapids Parish Drug Court.
Move, second.
Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Number two, to consider final adoption of an ordinance adding Section fifteen dash one twenty-eight to the Alexandria City Code relative to appropriate dress for persons in certain public places to prohibit public exposure in certain attire to provide for fines and civil penalties.
Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Wasn't there an amendment on that? There's.
The committee's amendment.
Okay, all right. Thirty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into professional services agreement with Christina Wembley for law clerk services.
Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, before you move to H, I just wanted to let the council know with regard to number thirty-two, and I'm not saying you would need any reconsideration. Mr. Johnson has expressed some issues about constitutionality of those kind of things. I just want to let the council know, since he's not here and for the public who maybe wasn't privy to it earlier, Mr. Johnson is not here because of a family emergency I think you're all aware of, or he would be here to talk about this. There are issues always when you deal with something like that, as you might imagine, freedom of expression, different things when it involves telling people how they can dress. I just want the council to be aware of that. If that makes you want to reconsider it, fine. If not, you're the governing authority, you can move on. But the administration, on behalf of Mr. Johnson, wants to let you know there could be questions about the broadness in scope, what is called vagueness, and what is called overbreadth in terms of constitutional law. So with that, that's all I want to report.
It's your motion, I guess I would be concerned, certainly not law and less the same. But there's, I wish I had known the specifics and I do understand certainly the situation.
We didn't handle it from our end trade from the councils and did all that work. We've from day one expressed some concerns. I know other cities have done it, Charles, but it doesn't, it just hadn't been challenged yet, so you just never know.
That's what I want to say, that this has never been challenged. I always say, I come out shooting, but I'll stop to say the good time. The only thing that even challenged this one was the first amendment of the.
That's what I'm.
Whether you can, whether this dialogue express your truth.
It's almost obvious.
I understand, I'm just, I have an obligation to tell you because Chuck wasn't here and so I'm just letting you know.
Before we go to H, Mr. Fowler, do you have any comments you would like to comment on the cooperative endeavor agreement with the Kappa Alpha?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. You, Mr. President, and members of the city council. The Alexandria Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha, Kappa Basketball League has been in existence for twenty-six years. We have tried on many occasions for funding and help. So first, I'd like to thank the city council for the affirmative vote today. And secondly, I would like to personally thank the mayor, the city attorney, and Ms. Harris for the assistance that they gave us in this matter. We could not have done it without their assistance. So again, thank you and thank the administration. Compromise and getting together, that's what happened here. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
District B used to have a pretty good police drive.
Okay, now we'll go to H, public hearing, community development.
Number thirty-four, to hold a public hearing concerning a stay of demolition order for twenty-eight Prospect Street.
Right.
Okay, yeah, we all know.
All right, we're done with the community development. Have a couple of things here, got a, the state demolition of twenty-eight Prescott, I mean, I'm sorry, Prospect, like to continue until December fourth.
December fourth?
No.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Then.
Close, okay.
Then have emergency condemnation on eighteen twelve.
The next item is number thirty-five, is to hold a public hearing concerning the emergency condemnation of one structure located at eight twelve Applewhite.
Okay, move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Marshall.
Okay.
All in favor?
Wait, let him speak.
All right, well, the condemnation of emergency on eighteen twelve Applewhite.
All in favor? All right.
Number thirty-six, to continue the public hearing on structures located at twenty-six nineteen Overton, twenty-one thirty-two Plantation, seven twenty-three Woodard, five ten Fourteenth Street, three thirty-five North Sixteenth Street.
Does have recommendations on twenty-six nineteen Overton as condemnation.
Okay, twenty.
Twenty-six nineteen Overton.
Okay, twenty-six nineteen Overton, you don't want here, the twenty-six nineteen Overton? Your recommendation condemnation?
Condomination.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith for condemnation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one thirty-two Plantation removed from the list, rehab is completed.
Removed from the list, okay. Don't need a motion on this. Okay. Motion by Mr. Silver, second by Mr. Fowler, that we remove twenty-one thirty-two Plantation from the list. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or motion carries?
At seven twenty-three Woodard, like to continue until December fourth for the rehab to be completed.
Move, second.
Okay, move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler for continuation on seven twenty-three Woodard until December fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then five ten Fourteenth Street, like to continue until September twenty-fifth for the honor to bring a documentation for the rehab.
Move, second.
Okay, move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler for five ten Fourteenth Street, a continuation to September the twenty-fifth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Three thirty-five North Sixteenth, like to continue until September twenty-fifth for the, complete the rehab on it.
Move, second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall for continuation of thirty-three thirty, I mean, three thirty-five North Sixteenth Street to September twenty-fifth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's it. Okay, the public hearing is now closed, we'll go to I, I mean committees.
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson.
No report.
Public Works Committee, Mr. Silver. Legal Committee, Mr. Smith.
Okay, considering adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with the Oxford Center of Louisiana. I move for introduction on this.
Second.
All right, consider, consider adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with the Alexandria Historical General化 Library and Museum, Architectural, Architectural and General化 for the Enlightenment and Education of Citizens in Alabama. So move.
Second.
For introduction.
Okay.
Utility Committee, Mr. Fowler.
One item is recommended by committee as an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter professional services agreement with E and E Consultants Incorporated. Introduction, also move.
Community Development, Mr. Marshall.
No report.
Personnel Insurance, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Marshall.
No report. Next meeting, we're gonna need quite a bit of time.
E and E Review, Mr. Fowler.
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawson.
He mentioned, I hate that we missed, see, Ms. Melinda Anderson in the audience. And we had a beautiful video that we wanted to show and I'm going to ask that we probably go ahead and show that this time and really showing all of our historic properties. Would you like to say something?
Mr. Lawson, I can send you an email. Our commission had asked that we have a little bit more time, we're going to quicken a little bit more.
Well, good, it was perfect there. And I normally read the emails, but kind of busy today, but I appreciate the work you're doing. It's a beautiful piece and I think it's going to surprise a lot of people when they see all the beautiful homes that we have in the area. And I want to say one other thing, if you will, Mr. President. I look at this room and I think it's a good thing that people show up and I hope that we continue to get a good crowd and talk about all the positive things that were suggested today. I think it would be wise if the administration brings to the council some plan for expanding this room, so we won't be so congested in here. And I don't know how we can do it, but get with our architect or record or whoever to make sure that we can accommodate all of those that would like to come to the meetings.
At no additional expense.
Say what you think. No, don't say what you think.
Maybe we got a plan in the next couple of meetings or so as to how we can accommodate citizens. That's it, Mr. President.
Yes.
I got to ask you, I don't know if Brother Ray, but how are we coming on the demolition of commercial structures?
Yeah.
I mean, we got, I mean, I got, I'm giving calls to people that have these commercial structures.
Best I've gone on.
And I, I mean. How, how we.
Bridge to Race Department is going to do the actual inspections and the confirmation. And all that we can do at this point is to board those facilities once they have been condemned. If we began engaging in the actual demolition of those structures, then we're going to be getting into those, those issues of environmental quality problems and cleanups, but at this point, we're working on a procedure for condemnation for that.
I'm saying if we work into something where we can find these people, you know, I mean, we need to pass on, but we can find them out, we can, this is right here on Washington Street. You got half the road following out in the back, you know, I mean, it's, and all the people living with these structures, a lady called me another day, and they live with these commercial structures, we can't do anything. I mean, we're going to start trying to put some on roads or do something to make them, they not, they not moving. I understand by the ground metal, you know, they need to settle and put it back in use or something.
On September eleven, we plan to hand up a council meeting, James Gillian, to come and do a presentation. We talked to you previously about the expropriation process under state law where the city can utilize the state law to expropriate adjudicated properties. And before you can use that statute, there has to be a community plan in order to use it. James Gillian is going to be here at the next council meeting and we're going to talk about how he initiated this program in Screamport. And at the same time, we're going to talk about some other programs that we would like to initiate at the same time and the commercial properties as well as other blighted properties, blighted properties will be addressed at that time. We are working on it.
Oh, yes, there's two other things to tell you behind that. I have a great concern as I travel neighborhoods across the city and I think this report we're coming in with the Louisiana Fire Department is that I see a great amount of structures in communities and neighborhoods that have been burned, that have been in fires where they've been there for like over a year or some, a half a year. I'd just like to hear an update from the Louisiana Fire Department on where we are on maybe getting those structures torn down, what the owners' plans are, just policy and procedure to make sure that these facilities, these homes are removed to isolate and damage the neighborhoods. And the second thing, what I like to say is this, we discussed at the last meeting, a meeting in Councilman Lawson's committee in regards to, committed to meet with Ms. Janice Seestrunk in regards to where we are with the monies that should be paid. We can allocate more of this down. Mr. Lawson?
We have a meeting planned, Mr. Crutchfield, and I talked about it, coming up next week. I'm probably going to give a heads up to, I think he delivered a check because it hit him today. Am I correct, Mr. Juneau? So there'll be some funds available, I'll anxious to await announcement from Ms. Seestrunk as to how soon they will be available. But Mr. Crutchfield did deliver a check to her today and we're going to follow up the remainder of the money to be delivered next week to the Shepherd Center.
Thank you.
One more thing, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Gloria Warsward on the Louisiana Department of Health and Hospital Doctor Control Program. And this is a certified Gloria Warsward, has attended, successful, completed the required procedures by the Center of Disease and Control and then CDC, Louisiana Department of Health and Hospital Doctor Control Program as a member of the Louisiana, prepared the strategy of planning work group and, correct, congratulate you.
It's a handy book, too.
Any other business? Move for it down.